Okay, I'm calling the regular. Calling the regular council meeting to order for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. It is 6:43. Ms. Monroe, if you can call the rule.
Mayor Dottie Barnard.
Here.
Don Merriman.
Here.
Sharon Hendren.
Here.
Charlie Campbell.
Here.
Nicole Schuck.
Here.
Aubertini.
Here.
Ryan Green.
Here.
If we could please stand for the invocation by Father Smith.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for your gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons with reverence that your creation deserves. Allow us, allow your blessing upon our first responders, police, and fire. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Mr. Men, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Our first item of the agenda tonight is action on the minutes. These are the minutes from November 21st, 2023. They were sent out to all members. Do we have any changes or additions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Schuck.
Yes.
Aubertini.
Yes.
Don Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
We'll move forward to citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. I would like to remind anybody who wants to speak tonight, if you could come up to the microphone, you cannot be picked up as well if you don't come up, and it is the new rule of council that we have everyone come to the microphone, so my fault last time. Do we have anybody tonight that wants to speak?
I'm sorry, I don't.
Okay. Council committees reports, planning and zoning, their 12-6 meeting was canceled. Anything from the last meeting?
Had to cancel that one, too.
Okay. Safety and service met tonight. Mr. Orsini, do you have anything you want to talk about?
During safety service, we discussed about modifying a position at the chief's request to provide reassignment of duties. I don't know what I did with the cheat. I got it here. So in brief, we had an individual working within the police department. She was doing duties that were in her job description. In addition, duties as assigned per civil service rules, and the chief wanted to kind of define what those were. We discussed it, and it came with a unanimous vote for approval out of the committee. I don't believe any action is required by council to make this happen. Sean, the chief can create this position without council approval?
It's a great question. Yes, I believe per our charter that we have the ability to create a position. However, per our charter, in order to enact the wage scale, which you'll be seeing as part of a follow-up conversation, probably not just with this position, that would also be something that does have to have a resolution by council.
And this had no wage, no wage scale changes for this conversation, but we did discuss reviewing the entire wage scale for all staffs.
And I just want to double-check with the clerk of council, Teresa. They do not need to pass a resolution for the creation of a job. It's more of the wage scale that we had to, like the foreman position, we needed to create the wage scale, which is why we had the resolution last, last week, because it included the job position as well as the wage scales. Is that accurate, Teresa?
I've seen it done both ways.
Okay.
Well, if we decide to do a resolution, we'll see at the next meeting.
The wage ordinance isn't ordinance, so.
Yep.
Finance also met for a special meeting tonight. We discussed the budget to give council an idea of what's going on. Because things are so tight, the budget is being reworked. We will have it presented to council next Tuesday for our second meeting of the month, and then we will have to have another meeting the following week that should last about 10, 20 minutes, depending on how long we want to discuss it, for the second reading of that item. So anticipate one more council meeting after last week for the second reading of the budget. The budget should be sent to all finance members by the end of this week. We'll review it this weekend. Finance meeting, finance will meet again next Tuesday to give our yea or nay and move it forward to council. We also discussed the tax. We're going to save that for other business tonight, discuss other business, what council would like to do with the tax ballot initiative that failed. Rules were supposed to meet tonight, but it did not get time, so I think we can do it next week.
We'll address a few things under other business. I just want to kind of let everyone know where we're at with that.
Okay. Park and rec met 12:04. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on that?
We covered a lot of things yesterday. We did, well, this amphitheater, we're trying to find out if we can extend it. Was that the way I should say it, Chuck? Extend it because we're not quite ready for it. And we did talk about doing the walking path at Raccoon Creek, and we did talk about Miles Estate. The Raccoon Creek walking path may be more doable right now for us than the amphitheater, financially that is. So, but we are trying to find out more information on the amphitheater as to how we can extend it or how that works, and we don't have all that information.
Thank you. Tree commission met on November 30th. Mr. Campbell?
Yes, we did. We, just real briefly, the, we purchased two trees for the fire station, and they did pick them up, and they're going to plant them. And we are talking about Arbor Day. Arbor Day will be on April 15th.
Great. We talked about it.
And we talked about Arbor Day and where it's going to be, and we would like to incorporate maybe the high school this year. We've done the grade school, the elementary, and see what they say about planting a tree there, and that's all.
April 26th.
April 26th.
Whatever Arbor Day is, yeah.
Design review board met November 28th. Ms. Monroe, is there anything from that meeting you can bring up?
There was one application, NAPA, for the refacing that they're doing. It was conditionally approved for a full update to the exterior, not just the front. So they discussed colors. The board approved colors for the building and conditionally approved it.
Okay. Sean, anything else you want to add on that, or no?
Conditional approval. I think there's going to be probably a further conversation on that, and that's where I'll leave it.
Okay. Moving on to director reports. Council received the water sewer and street. Did anyone have any question on those three items? I noticed our water is still low, so it's, I think the lowest it's been in three years?
Yeah.
Like last month was lowest, but the last few months have been lowest in three years.
It's trending down, but we've checked all of our instruments. It's reading correctly. Just production is down right now.
Okay.
It always drops with the time change, dark earlier, but it is lower than previous years.
Would you like to go ahead and get the service director report?
Yes, I'll be real quick. A lot of this is redundant, but the item one, new water tower, we did finally receive the asphalt, and I'm going to look over here at David. I do think we got the last payment stuff in, so it's being processed as we speak. So hopefully, we will get that new water tower closed out this year. I'm hoping. Jumping into the water plant upgrade, upgrade, the new revised general plan, as you all know, we were going to have a two million gallon expansion. We're now doing a half million gallon expansion. That general plan has been turned into the EPA for review. Wastewater, Jacob's Engineering will be sending out surveyors this month to survey the properties, see where the new buildings and new processes will fit for the new design of the wastewater plant. East Jersey, we had yet another walk through there. I am still waiting on a couple street signs at Cassin and Jersey that need to be replaced, and also waiting on the asphalt to come in. As soon as those are in, and I review the asphalt, we should be able to accept that road and get it off our plate. Polte has been working hard on their punch list, but they still haven't completed it. And again, let them know that until we have completed and accepted a portion of those roads, not where the new construction is, but the older construction, that we will not be plowing and salting those roads until we get this punch list completed.
You won't be plowing the new or the old roads?
We won't be plowing either.
Okay.
Until the punch list is completed. Once the punch list is completed on the older section, then I will come to council and say, okay, it's time for us to accept those roads and start the one-year warranty. But not until that punch list has been completed. The last item, Concord Crossing East Development, we allowed them to put a base coat in on the new section that's going in back there. That will help prevent tracking mud into the fonderous area. And the new waterline extension from Cannondale, the new road to Douglas, is about two-thirds of the way in. We had to come to a stop on that until we got an easement to cross the bike path. We are waiting on that right now. As soon as that's completed, we hope to finish that extension and connection. And that is all I have, unless there are any questions on these projects.
Anybody with questions tonight? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
We have no tabled legislation tonight, so we will move forward to public hearings of legislation. We are moving these up a week usually from the end of the year. They are the, all the housekeeping items. Resolution 2023-36, a resolution establishing the 2024 schedule of holidays for the city of Johnstown. This word, or this resolution is just setting in stone the holidays that the city will celebrate for the next year. Anything else you want to add to that, Ms. Monroe?
No, unless you see any issues. I kind of followed what we've done in the past.
Any questions from council? Any questions from citizens tonight? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Motion to pass Resolution 2023-36 as written.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Schuck.
Yes.
Aubertini.
Yes.
Don Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Yes.
Move to Resolution 2023-37, a resolution establishing the regular meeting dates and times for all regular city council meetings for the 2024 calendar year. So for to the new guys in the audience, you know the dates for the next year. There is a date in November and a date in March that are on Wednesdays instead of Tuesdays. All other ones are your standard second or first and third Tuesdays of the month. Does council have any questions on this resolution? Hearing none. Do citizens have any comments or questions? Do we have a motion? I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution 2023-37 as written.
I'll second.
I'll second, sorry.
Bob, second.
Second.
So if it doesn't pass, does that mean we don't have any council meetings?
Yeah, probably. Nicole Schuck.
Yes.
Aubertini.
Yes.
Don Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes. Okay, the next one is Resolution 2023-38, a resolution establishing the regular meeting dates and times for all regular planning and zoning commission meetings for the 2024 calendar year. Just like the above, it's setting the dates for all the zoning meetings for the next year, the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. I don't think there were any other changes, were there?
No, no, and we'll, we'll do a better job broadcasting that last Wednesday than we did this year, so that kind of threw everybody. So yeah, all the dates are fine there. I'll make the motion approves written.
Second.
Aubertini.
Yes.
Don Merriman.
Yes.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Schuck. Yes.
The next one is Resolution 2023-39. It's a resolution establishing the submission deadlines for planning and zoning commission applications in the 2024 calendar year. This is updated for the changes we made this year, correct?
So, yeah, so this gives more time. So the submission deadline, that's, that's submitting to the city, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So we're giving, we're giving the city a month, but I did want to make clear on when that's going to the zoning, planning and zoning commission.
That's up to you guys. I mean, we're going to be getting it four weeks ahead of time, so staff, that'll give staff time to review it.
Really, the large projects are the ones that we need with time. The majority of variances and things like that are fine. It's just, I want to make sure that we're getting the large projects with plenty of time.
Not this resolution. That's more of an internal whenever, you know, you decide.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure we get it writing somewhere so everybody knows where we're at. We don't have to do it here, but I just want to make sure we do.
What was the standard, what was the time before? How long did we have?
So we get them Friday, and the meeting's Tuesday?
No, no, but how long did they have their submission?
Oh, on this?
Before.
Same as.
It was two weeks.
Oh, before, before, because this one is a reflection of what we currently have.
Yeah, right.
But before that, I think they had to get us two weeks, and then we would get it on a meeting, which it's, it's.
Yeah.
By the time they get it to us, then we have to post public notices and everything else, and zoning code enforcement officer only being Monday through Wednesday. If you get it on a Wednesday, you're not going to have enough time because he's going to come in next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and he's going to be out by a packet, so he's got three days to do the work. And the paper, you have to submit it on Friday in order for it to be put in the paper by Tuesday.
So this helps in this point, isn't it?
Yeah. And I mean, if we could get things a week ahead of time, that'd be fantastic. We just need to capture that wherever we need to capture that.
Okay. Any other questions from council on this resolution? Citizens? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. As written.
I'll second.
Mayor Barnard.
Yes.
Ryan Green.
Yes.
Sharon Hendren.
Yes.
Charlie Campbell.
Yes.
Nicole Schuck.
Yes.
Aubertini.
Yes.
Don Merriman.
Yes.
That is all the housekeeping for the next year. There's no introduction of new legislation, so we'll move to other business. I'll bring up the first item. We discussed in finance committee tonight, and we thought we'd bring it to council, let council start talking about it, stewing on it, thinking about it. We had most of the members of the new council and the finance committee meeting tonight to also discuss it. The tax ordinance that failed in November, whether or not we want it back on the ballot in March, and if we want it in ballot in March, what percentage, what details we want. So the filing, to file it, Sean, if we change anything, cost how much?
I'm going to defer to your clerk of council. She's the one that handled it the last time, whenever we went through the procedural pieces of it, after you all made the resolution, resolution, and we actually passed the ordinance. Do you remember, Teresa, the filing fee? Wanted to know the filing fee, and I think the filing fee is going to be the same whether you keep it exactly the same or if you modified it slightly.
Okay.
So it's really the act of filing. Do you remember the filing fee, county?
I don't remember that.
It may not even been a filing fee.
There's definitely a filing fee. It's at least $100 or something. I think just for councils, what, 50? Something like that, so. It's under $1,000, put it that way.
So since this is other business, this is kind of free-flowing talking on this. So the, the thoughts, positives and minuses of putting it back on the ballot so quickly, the items that it's more positive is that it's more fresh in people's minds, whether it's negative or positive. If you keep it the same, there's not much that has to change for filing it. The negatives are, you have to file this by December 19th, which means this council has to file it, and it would be on the new council to try to pass it. The, sorry, my mind just blanked. It's also during the winter because it's a primary, since it's a presidential primary, it would be on the ballot, I think, this third week of March. Yeah, it's the third week of March that would be on the ballot. So that would have to campaign in January, February, and March during the snow and cold. How positive or how many people are going to want to do that? So those are the thoughts on that. If you don't do it in March, then it has to go on the ballot in November, and you have till August or July to decide that. So I just wanted to get council's thoughts on what they think about the tax ballot initiative and what you think we should or shouldn't do.
We're just interested in getting it on the ballot. We're not, so discussing of how much it should be can come after if we want to put it on the ballot. Is that correct?
No, it has, you have to know how much it's going to be to put it on the ballot.
You would have to.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, tonight, we're just saying, yes, we're going to put it on the ballot, no, we're not. And then we can discuss the amount, or do you want to make all that in one big ball of wax?
I, I just want people to be able to think about it, and we can make decision next Tuesday, but just to try to get everybody's thoughts on it. And actually, if, if some of the new council members want to give their thoughts on it, too, so. But I just wanted to get what this council wants to do, if you want to try to move it forward, try to put it on for March, or if you want to wait till November.
We need the money. The way we're going to get the money is to get it on the ballot and get it passed.
Mm-hmm.
Have we thought about doing a 2%, 50%?
That's, that's the first thing that I looked at.
I know that we, I know we spoke those numbers.
That, I, valid question, valid conversation to have, but I think the, the question we're trying to resolve now is, do we get it on the ballot and then define it between now and, and the filing time? Do we, do we want to move ahead, do we want to move ahead first? Or if you're saying unconditional to move ahead, that we want to change?
Unconditional, move it ahead. Sorry.
Councilman Orsini, if I could just clarify, so the passage of it would have to define the percentage as well as the credit.
Correct.
So that would have to be defined. Now, how you want to appropriate the funds would be a different conversation, so I just want to clarify, there would definitely have to be, to Nicole's point, if you're going to do it 2% to a 50%, that has to be defined in the, in the decision that needs to be made before the 19th for the filing deadline.
She mentioned her, her, her decision would be conditional on changing to the language, which is what you're saying.
And if you wanted me to respond to the 2% with a 50% credit, which is an option, just for you to have information to think about over the weekend, if you did that, the positive impact financially on the residents would be reduced. So the savings for the residents would be less for the ones that, as a percentage-wide. So just, just food for thought, not saying it's not the right answer.
I understand that.
If you reduce the credit, even though you're reducing the percent from a two to two and a half, or from a two, 2.25 to two, by reducing that credit to a 50%, effectively anyone that works outside of the municipality reduces the savings that they would have seen at a 75% rate. So, which may entice.
My, my, if you look at the, if you look at the percentage of people who voted, you look at where they voted, you look at the people who aren't registered here. I mean, there's, there's about 60% of people that currently live here that are not even registered to vote here. So I don't know if you guys know that, but there is. Yeah. Well, Syntax Homes back there, the Polte Division, there's 33% of those people came out and voted, and there is a good, I think, 50-some percent aren't even registered to vote back there, not in Johnstown.
So let's, let's look at this in two different ways. Okay, so does council want to try to put this on the ballot in March? Let's look at that way.
I would say March is too early. I would wait till November if they, if they plan to do that.
So we have a March?
Let's say it passes in March. When do we start drawing revenue on that?
It takes about a year.
You, I think it's actually in how you write it. You can, it can change midway.
Yeah, you could put it, I, I would recommend doing it at halfway point or at least a quarter.
June 30th.
June 30th. I'm looking at Dave. Dave's nodding, I think. Halfway point.
Halfway or a year in.
So if you, if it, if it did go March, it did pass, you could start collecting some of the revenue, additional revenue next year. It, it wouldn't really bake out till the very end of the year that you'd start seeing a lot of it.
Your withholdings would start in July.
Right. But the, the major portions will probably be later, at the quarter points.
So you're looking, that's what I was going to say. Are you looking at November for the most of your, for the most of your collections on that? Or what are you, what are you looking at?
Your withholdings is your biggest portion of your income tax.
Right.
So for some, so say for my employer, my employer withhold, withholds my income, my Johnstown tax. For my wife, Columbus City doesn't withhold it, so we have to make the quarterly remittance. So it just depends on the employer. If they, if they withhold it, then you get it right away. The other people, it's going to be later on in the year, so. Just depends on the employer. Charlie, what are your thoughts on when you want to try to put it on?
Well, we need, I mean, it's obvious that we need money. All right? I mean, there's no question. And the only way they're going to get it is to vote on. My only, my only withdrawal is I am, you know, I lean towards the 2%, 50% reduction. That, that's where I lean. I don't, I don't feel that if we leave it at where it's at, we vote on this last time, that it will pass. I just don't think it will.
Nicole?
Sorry, I was looking at notes. At, I understand that at the 50%, I mean, it failed by almost, I mean, it was, it failed.
You have to flip 212, 222 people.
Yeah.
At the same amount of voters.
Right.
You have to flip 222. It failed by 440, so.
At those numbers, I think you're looking more at the, I think the percentage would hold out, though.
I'd be very shocked if the primary vote is that high.
Failed by, that percentage, that's going to be a decent sample size either way. So it's probably going to be more of a percentage that you're trying to flip instead of 200.
So you want to do November or March?
I'll try it in March, but I, I want it, I don't think it's going to go at two and a quarter at 75% discount. I don't, not, not in March.
Bob?
I think, I think we should try it as soon as possible and continue to try it. Not because the, the way the books look, the revenue is needed. And if the committee doesn't, doesn't want to support the revenue increase, I'm okay with that, but there has to be an understanding that services, ability to adapt to the future, and long-term success are tied to, they're tied together. They're not, they're not separated. There isn't, there isn't funding stream, there isn't misappropriation, there isn't something that's going to go away in the future to allow our current revenues to cover our current. There isn't, there isn't funding stream, there isn't misappropriation, there isn't something that's going to go away in the future to allow our current revenues to cover our current costs. And that's to stay flat, not to improve or take advantage of opportunities. So I'm in favor of March. The 2%, 50%, the 2.25, 75%, I think that's more strategic and marketing in its essence. You either support it or you don't. I don't know if there's a lot of people shaving or looking at the numbers that closely, because those numbers get very small. I think the supporters that work outside the municipality would much prefer 75% credit, or 0.75% credit, obviously, because that funding comes off of what they're paying the current local municipality. So 51 way, half-dozen the other. I just know that the revenue that's coming in now can't support the operations. We've been through months of finance meetings where we're cutting, who can go without what? Who can do another year without, hopefully, the trucks make it? Who can do another year with one less employee? I mean, that's, that's where we're at. So the details are not that important to me specifically on how we run the two versus two and a quarter. Just that we, we need this revenue.
Sean?
March?
Okay. I will, I'll give you my opinion, since everybody else gets their opinion. I'm against the March. I saw how much work had to go in to get what we, what we even did this year. And I think the winter months are going to be hard to get people out. It was hard enough to get people out to campaign, campaign in the summer when it's nice. I think March is going to be difficult. Does anyone want to give your input on what you're talking?
I just wanted to see if we learned anything, I mean, if we had time to learn anything about the last election and why it lost something. If we had time to talk to people and actually get out and.
You had a, you had a, you had to take in obvious, these are your like extreme, large bubble, obvious facts here. You had the largest voter turnout you've ever had. You, so, which goes to also say that you probably have the largest uneducated voter turnout that you're ever going to have, in addition to 100%. You're crazy to think that.
You're saying the Johnstown voters are uneducated?
It'd be arrogant to say that most people that vote don't look at all 100% of what they're voting on, uneducated on what they're voting on, yes, Marvin, not uneducated on that they went to school.
Let's stop.
Don't be arrogant yourself, sir.
Stop, John. More research. Wes or Jeff? If you guys could come up here, that way they catch you on the microphone.
There are people watching online, so I don't know, maybe microphone.
Wait, everybody needs to come to the microphone.
Yeah, Wesley, cool. I feel that, you know, March might be very fresh to a lot of folks when they come back out and vote. But I feel the more that it gets out there, you know, and how important this is to our community and the services that is required to keep us running. You know, I think a lot of people, they, they might not get that, that point. And, you know, so if we throw it out there in March, it doesn't pass again, and we throw it out there in November, I think people might start to catch on to, hey, you know, maybe we need to look at this a little closer. And then truly, you know, seek out some answers of, what do we need this money for? Where's it going to go? And I think if we can provide our citizens those answers, I think, you know, ultimately, I think our messaging will come across that, you know, the folks will vote in favor of this.
Mr. Barr?
I think you have.
If you could come up here, please.
Please come to the microphone.
Sorry.
Sorry.
You should make Tiffany come back up.
I don't know if my opinion is really needed. It sounds like you got a super majority already from counsel that's sitting that would be the ones that need to vote on it. I don't know if I have an opinion one way or another, to tell you the truth at this moment, because I'm not a polling expert by any means.
Okay, so.
I can tell you where I'm at. I don't know if Sharon got to go.
Sharon did, Sharon said no.
Yeah, I mean, I would tell you, what's the, what's the phrase, beware the Ides of March? We're going to be right there, a little after it, that's the 15th, but, but I just think you don't have enough time. Clearly, the voters of Johnstown spoke. They know what they want, they know what they don't want. Taxes are always tough because you're asking for money, and things are tight. So as much as I would like to see a May, I wish there was a May, because that would be perfect.
It would be.
Because we could have time to start some focus groups, see what people want, you know, educate people, talk to different groups, get the message really out there. But I just, I don't think it's enough time coming out of winter. I don't think you have it. I wish it was in November, but it is.
So I will send each of you and everyone the forecast from Rita on the different percentages and the credits, so that you can look at them this week. So that when we come back next Tuesday, we can have an idea what we want to do for percentage, if we want to do 2.25 to 1.75, wherever. So that counsel has all the information. So I will send that out to you guys, so that you can start looking at it. So it sounds like at least the majority of counsel wants to do it this March, so. That is all I have for other business. Does anyone else on counsel have anything for other business? Go ahead.
On a much less charged issue, I've gone back and reviewed the rules of council order, rules of, I can't give you the right term, council rules of order. Tracy went through and very helpfully changed all the village to city, basic stuff. And there's a couple of other updates to make it current. One is for the attendance policy. It's a report to the clerk of court, or court to the clerk of council, that you give notice that you won't be here, something we're doing anyhow. There was a note about not using electronic devices. We just add for non-council business. Obviously, I'm on my computer, our phones, it's a different time to where they're, they're part of normal business. And there were two additions, and I will send these all out to the group just to review. We've added executive session many times, we're current, without 24-hour notice. Was it clear in our rules? Said that you couldn't, then it also gave the ability to adapt, to adopt the agenda, to adopt the agenda as we saw fit with the quorum. So I just put it in there and put it in there so it's specific that it was acceptable without 24 hours, as long as it was deemed an emergency by the city manager. Puts a lot back on Sean, or the city manager, whoever's sitting at the time, to be specific that it is an emergency. Since the city manager works at the will of council, I thought that was an appropriate position to be in. That's something we can decide if we want to keep or not. And then I also added the approval of the agenda, where we've never actually approved the agenda before. But on the fourth order of business I have, that we want to approve the agenda. That way, if there's any adjustments, we can make them on the front end, get them in the agenda, and then as we work towards them, we can work towards them, instead of doing it kind of ad hoc as we go. It hasn't been a problem, but it kind of formalizes it. We took a lot of times, you had to request to speak from the mayor. That's something I'd like to see more of. We changed it to presiding officer, because the mayor's not here, there's a process on who runs the meeting after that. Put in how we're doing open, open business now, or other business now, as an open discussion format. We kind of talk back and forth and kind of leave those former rules of asking in the three-minute period.
We're still leaving it, if it, if it carries on too much, then it needs to go back to committee.
Yeah, yeah, so that is specified out here, that it reads, open business, open, other business format, open discussion on general items, limited 10, 10 minutes per item. The idea is it gives you opportunity to kind of work through some stuff and move on, but if we get stuck, then it will go through the committee process. Allows us to clear some of the, the smaller items in an efficient manner. And then the other change that was somewhat meaningful was it listed where if you were going to abstain from a vote, you had to give a reason why. I removed that because later on it said that if you have a direct or personal, a direct or personal interest in a matter, which I changed to a conflict of interest, broadens that pool. And at that time, you should inform counsel on the onset, right? So instead of waiting till we get to a vote period, you're supposed to inform, if you have a conflict of interest, you say, hey, I have a conflict of interest, you remove yourself from the conversation. You don't have to remove yourself from the table, which is written in here. And at that time, you can give the reason why you have a conflict of interest or not. So obviously, you're going to stay at that point because you have a conflict. That puts on the front end instead of the back end of the conversation.
With the conflict of interest, you can't vote, can you discuss?
No.
Okay.
So if you have a conflict of interest, you should refrain from discussion and voting.
Okay.
Right, because you're, you're going to sway potentially, if you have a conflict of interest, you know, ethic rules say, back off, which is pretty straightforward.
Hold on.
Could I add to that? Just from a legal situation, it does not disallow that council member from going to the public and having the same rights as a public individual with a three-minute opportunity to speak. They just cannot advocate.
100%. So from, from your seat, as a, as a sitting council member, you cannot discuss it. I, you would have, or any other citizen, you could walk around, go to the podium, speak your piece.
Okay, perfect.
And I believe that was it. Oh, and we did change the date for getting information to us from the clerk of council, from, or not the, the time, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. They're, they're getting bigger and longer and just gives.
And that's because the packet sometimes do not come out till 9 o'clock at night, because Theresa's working, trying to get them out.
Usually, until 6:00 or 7:00, so. Or Friday.
I think it's a fair and icy for us if we get them at 6:00 or 9:00 on a Friday. I don't think it impacts us nearly as much as it would impact the staff.
Yes.
And that's, those are some of the nutshell ones. I'll send this out to everyone, just take a review. I'd just like to get this updated in place, since it still says village, it just, we can clean that up.
Does the Rules Committee want to meet next week to vote on that, to move it to counsel then?
Yeah, we'll do, well, I won't be here next week, but we can certainly have a, have a meeting. That's why I'm talking about it now. Next, next Tuesday, I have a conflict, I can't, I can't be here.
Okay.
So next Tuesday, what time? We could meet.
You can set your own.
We have Finance Committee.
I can call in too. I'm just going to be far away.
Okay. We'll call you as soon as Finance is over.
Perfect.
Just take 10 minutes.
And that is all. Well, this doesn't fall into rules specifically, but there is, we've, Donnie identified a, I'm trying to get the term right, the ethics code. And it kind of goes into detail, kind of the, the big bullet points that are in our rules of order, but it kind of goes into how we behave. I'm going to send that out to everyone, too. I think that's something we couldn't, it wouldn't be rules, it would just be something we would adopt through resolution as something we all agree to, and just kind of review it. It's pretty straightforward stuff, but it just, it just kind of, it legitimize it, puts it down on paper for review, so. Theresa has both of those. Theresa, could you send out those two documents to everyone?
Yes.
Code of Ethics in Contact.
Code of Ethics in Contact, that's correct.
Mr. Campbell or Ms. Shuck, do you guys have anything for other business?
I do not.
Ms. Merriman?
Anything new coming down, anything we should have on our radar?
As far as new.
Applications?
From a building perspective?
Anything.
You've got the chase, you've got the ACE that's currently going on. There's remodels that have been happening, building expansions that are coming down the pipeline. I can't think of anything right now. Obviously, you've got the PD district, there's still a lot to unpack there. You've got the Port Authority land, I'll call it Huntington at this point, instead of the Port Authority land. There's a, there's a potential application there, but that's consistent with the PD discussion that we had, so. None that I can think of off the top of my head, but I'll reserve the right to forget at the current moment, with all the items that we have, so.
One thing I had, definitely wanted to thank our service guys for cleaning up the truck for the parade.
That was great.
Looked amazing. It was a great group, it was a fun event, had a good time with that. And all the downtown events, it was definitely a good night. I missed most of it because I had to come back with the truck, but hopefully not next year.
I want to thank them for hanging all the wreaths. The wreaths look beautiful. You guys did all that, right?
Yes, I will let them know.
So that, it looks really nice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
While we're thanking people, I think it's appropriate to point out the folks that helped us get the lights up through the downtown. It really, really looked nice, the AEP, the CLC, I mean, there was, there was a lot, there was a conglomerate of people that made that happen. And I think it added to the festivities, it was really nice.
You can read a book downtown at this point now, with all the Christmas lights. And don't go looking in the Dashing Diner, because Tiffany said she might be sleeping in there just to look at the Christmas lights one night. Ms. Hendren, do you have anything for other business? Okay, Sean? I guess that is it tonight, so we will, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
A second.
You got a second? Aye. Man, it's good tonight, isn't it?
One other thing I forgot about that is that we're going to change the order of voting, so whoever makes the motion will be the first vote.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it'll be in there, it'll be there for review. I'll make sure, I'll make sure I point it out.
You can replay that vote a bit.